Hello and welcome to study session number twenty four of daily memory lab. In today's study session, we will see round number five of E-way bill. Page number sixteen to nineteen and then we will do round number four of supply under GST fifty seven to sixty one page number. And round number three of page number fourteen to eighteen of charge of GST. And round number two of whatever we studied yesterday and then we will see. We can study about five to six fresh pages depending on the time availability. On that note, let us begin our study session. Before that, let us set up the intention for the study session. Now I am going to study for thirty to sixty minutes with full focus. In this study session, I lowered down all my expectations and embrace imperfection. I may or may not get big breakthroughs in this study session and I am totally okay with it. I will most likely make mistakes in the next thirty to sixty minutes and if I make them, I am not going to judge myself. I embrace my mistakes and reset my ambitions. My goal is not to achieve perfection. My goal is only to make a tiny bit of progress in the next thirty to sixty minutes. On that note, let us begin with E-way bill. Validity period of E-way bill and consolidated E-way bill rule number one thirty eight to one thirty eight ten. The validity of E-way bill depends on the distance to be traveled by the goods. For a distance of less than two hundred kilometers, the E-way bill will be valid for a day from the relevant date. For every two hundred kilometers thereafter, the validity period will be added. One day, which means the validity will be one additional day from the relevant date. So, distance within country up to two hundred kilometers, one day in cases of other than. Over dimensional cargo. So, we saw what is over dimensional cargo which is. Uh, which is like this huge lorries with twenty thirty wheels. That carry this airplane fuselage, airplane wings or big, you know, tunnel, uh, you know, pipes, all those things. Okay, so over dimensional cargo, apart from that over dimensional cargo, any other normal cargo, the thing is up to two hundred kilometers, you have one day validity. And then for every two hundred kilometer or part thereof thereafter, one additional day. Okay, if it is over dimensional cargo or multimodal shipment in which at least one leg involves transport by ship, then. Validity is up to twenty kilometers and then beyond twenty kilometers, every twenty kilometer or part thereof. One additional day in case of over dimensional cargo. Relevant date means the date on which the E-way bill has been generated. And the period of validity shall be counted from the time at which the E-way bill has been generated. And each day shall be counted as the period expiring midnight of the day immediately following the date of generation of E-way bill. This can be explained by the following examples. Suppose an E-way bill is generated at twelve four A M on. Fourteenth March, then the first day would end on twelfth midnight of fifteen to sixteenth March. Second day will end on twelfth midnight of sixteen to seventeen March and so on. Suppose. An E-way bill is generated at twenty three fifty eight hours on fourteenth March, then the first day would end on. Twelve midnight of fifteen sixteen March, second day will end on twelfth midnight of sixteen seventeen March and so on. The validity of the E-way bill starts when the first entry is made in part B. That is vehicle entry is made first time in case of road transportation or first transport document number entry. In case of rail, air, ship, transportation, whichever is the first entry, it may be noted that. Validity is not recalculated for subsequent entries in part B. A consignor hands over his goods for transportation on Friday to transporter. However, the assigned transporter starts the movement of goods on Monday. The assigned transporter starts the goods movement on Monday. The validity period of the E-way bill starts only after the details. In part B are updated by the transporter for the first time. In the given situation, consignor can fill the details in part A on Friday and hand over his goods to the transporter. When the transporter is ready to move the goods, he can fill part B, that is the assigned transporter can fill the details. In part B on Monday and the validity of the E-way bill will start from Monday. A registered person has to transport goods from its warehouse to its depot located at a distance of five hundred kilometers in a normal cargo. In the given case, if E-way bill is generated, it will be valid for three days. Over dimensional cargo means a cargo carried as single indivisible unit which exceeds. The dimensional limits prescribed in rule ninety three of central motor vehicle rules made under motor vehicles act nineteen eighty eight. Okay, extension of validity period. If validity of the E-way bill expires. The goods are not supposed to be moved. In general, validity of the E-way bill cannot be extended. However, validity of the E-way bill can be extended in the following cases. Extension by commissioner for certain categories of goods. Commissioner may on the recommendations of the council by notification extend the validity period of an E-way bill for. Certain categories of goods as may be specified therein. Extension by transporter in exceptional circumstances. Under ex- under circumstances of exceptional nature, including transshipment. Goods cannot be transported within the validity period of the E-way bill. The transporter may extend the validity period after updating the details in part B if required. Thus, the transporter who is carrying the consignment as per the E-way bill system. At the time of expiry of validity period can extend the validity period. Such transporter can extend the validity of the E-way bill. If the consignment is not being reached the destination within the validity period due to exceptional circumstance like. Calamity, law order issues. Transshipment delay, a accident of concern conveyance, et cetera. He needs to explain this reason in details while extending the validity period. The validity of the E-way bill may be extended within eight hours from the time of its expiry. Acceptance of E-way bill. The details of E-way bill generator shall be made available to the supplier if registered. Where the information in part A has been furnished by the recipient or transporter or. Available to the recipient if registered where the information is party has been furnished by the supplier or transporter. On the common portal and the supplier or register recipient as the case may be. Shall communicate his acceptance or rejection of the consignment covered by the E-way bill rule one thirty eight sub rule eleven. In case the person to whom the information in part A is made available does not communicate his acceptance or rejection within the prescribed time. It shall be deemed that he has accepted the said details. The time limit specified for this purpose is seventy two hours of the details being made available to him on the common portal. Or the time of delivery of goods whichever is earlier, rule one thirty eight twelve. E-way bill generated in one state is valid in another state. The E-way bill generated under this rule or under rule one thirty eight of. Goods and service tax rules of any state or unit territory shall be valid in every state or unit territory. One thirty eight rule thirteen. E-way bill is not valid doc- valid for movement of goods without vehicle number on it. If there is a mistake incorrect or wrong entry in the E-way bill, then it cannot be edited or corrected. Only option is cancellation of E-way bill within twenty four hours of generation and generate a new one with correct details. E-way bill may be updated with vehicle number any number of times. The latest vehicle number should be available on E-way bill and should match with the vehicle carrying it in case. Checked by the department. If multiple invoices are issued by the supplier to recipient, that is. For movement of goods of more than one invoice of same consignor and consignee. Multiple E-way bills have to be generated. That is for each invoice, one E-way bill has to be generated. Irrespective of the fact whether same or different consignors or consignees are involved. Multiple invoices cannot be clubbed to generate one E-way bill. However, after generating all these E-way bills, one consolidated E-way bill can be prepared for transportation purpose. If goods are going in one vehicle. Okay, so from here, we will continue tomorrow. We have completed the first segment of today's session. Let us go to the next segment which is supply under GST page number fifty seven to sixty one. Okay, fifty seven, non-supplies under GST. Activities or transactions specified under schedule three. Schedule seven subsection to clause A provides activities or transactions specified in schedule three. Shall be treated neither as a supply of goods nor as supply of service. Schedule three specifies transactions which shall be neither treated as supply of goods nor as supply of service thus. The activities or transactions specified under this schedule can be termed as non-supplies under the GST term. In a way, it is a negative list for the purpose of GST. It is important to note that apart from the activities specified in schedule three, some activities have been notified by the government via different notifications. Which are also be to be considered as non-supplies. Further, some circulars have been issued clarifying that certain transactions are to be considered as non-supplies. Therefore. Exemptions have been given through three avenues. One is through schedule three, which is directly given in the act itself. The other is through notification, the other is through circular. So, let us see non-supplies listed in schedule three now. Schedules services by an employee to the employer in the course of or in relation to his employment. Services provided by casual worker to employer who gives wages on daily basis to the worker are. Services provided by the worker in in the course of employment. Casual workers employed by a construction contractor for execution of a building contract for him. Are services in the course of employment. Similarly, casual workers employed by. A security services agency for provision of security services to a client or also services in the course of employment. Only. Services that are provided by the employee to the employer in the course of employment are outside the realm of supply. However, services provided outside the ambit of employment for a consideration would qualify as supply. Services provided on contract basis by a person to another, that is principal to principal basis or not. Services provided in the course of employment. Any amount paid by employer to employee for not joining a competing business is paid for providing the service of. Forbearance to act and cannot be considered as services rendered in the course of employment. Okay, second point. Services by any court or tribunal established under any law for the time being enforced, okay? Third point, functions performed by MPs, MLAs, pancayat members, municipality members and members of other. Local authorities. Duties performed by any person who holds any post in pursuance of the provisions of. The constitution in that capacity. Duties performed by President of India, Vice President of India, Prime Minister of India. Chief Justice of India, Governors, Speaker of Lok Sabha. Chief Election Commissioner, Comptroller and Auditor General of India, Chairman of UPSC, Attorney General of India in that capacity. Duty is performed by any person as a chairperson or a member or a director in a body established by the central government. Or a state government or local authority and who is not deemed as an employee before the commencement of this clause. Services of funeral, burial, crematorium or mortuary, including transportation of the deceased. Sale of land and subject to paragraph five B of schedule two, that is sale of building. In case where the entire consideration for sale of building. Received after issuance of completion certificate or after it is after its first occupation whichever is earlier. So, that is removed from the taxability. Actionable claims other than specified actionable claims. Actionable claims are specifically included in the definition of goods under section two clause fifty two. However, this para of schedule three specifically excludes actionable claims other than specified actionable claims. From the ambit of the definition of supply. Co-joint reading of the said provision provisions implies that. Only specified actionable claims are treated as supply. All other actionable claims are outside the. Ambit of definition of supply. Now, the question arises, what are the specified actionable claims? Specified actionable claim means the actionable claim involved in or by way of betting casinos, gambling. Horse racing, lottery or online money gaming. Online money gaming means online gaming in which players pay or deposit money or money's worth including digital. Virtual digital assets in expectation of winning money or money's worth including virtual digital. Assets in any event including game scheme, competition or any other activity or process. Whether or not its outcome or performance is based on skill, chance or both. And whether the same is permissible or otherwise under any other law for the time being enforced. Online gaming means offering of a game on the internet or an electronic network and includes online money gaming. To clause eighty A. Some of the other examples of actionable claims are right to recover insurance money, claim for arrears of rent. Claim for future rents if these can be assumed. Unsecured loans, unsecured debentures, bills of exchange, promissory note, bank guarantee, fixed deposit receipt. Right to the benefit of a contract, these are not considered as supply of goods or services. Non-supplies wide notification. Government is empowered to notify activities or transactions undertaken by the central government, a state government or any local authority in which they are. Engaged as public authorities as the activities or transactions which shall be treated neither as supply of goods nor as supply of services. Okay, till now, following activities have been notified under the said clause. Services by way of any activity in relation to a function interested to a pancayat under. Article two forty three of the constitution or to a municipality under. Two forty three W of the constitution, two forty three G of the constitution, two forty three W of the constitution are neither treated as. Supply of goods nor as a supply of service. Grant of alcoholic liquor license. Services by way of grant of alcoholic liquor license by the state governments are treated neither as. Supply of goods nor as supply of service. Such license is granted against consideration in the form of license fee or application fee for. Or by whatever name it is called. This special dispensation is applicable only to supply of service by way of. Grant of alcoholic liquor licenses by the state government as an agreement between center and states. So. Fifty seven to sixty one. Okay, so we have completed that second part as well. Now let us go to the third part. Which is charge of GST page number fourteen to eighteen. Charge of GST page number fourteen to eighteen. Eighteen means we will read till the end of this segment. CGST shall be levied on all intrastate supplies of goods or services or both. Tax shall be collected in such manner as may be prescribed and shall be paid by the taxable person. However, intrastate supply of alcoholic liquor for human consumption is outside the purview of CGST. Value for levy, transaction value under section fifteen of the CGST Act. Rate of GST, rates for GST are rates as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the GST council. Maximum rate of CGST can be twenty percentage. In case of interstate supplies, goods, interstate supplies of goods and or services. Integrated GST is levied on the transaction value under section fifteen of the CGST Act. Since alcoholic liquor for human consumption is outside the purview of GST law, IGST is also not leviable on the same. IGST is the sum total of CGST and SGST or UTGST. Maximum rate of IGST can be forty percentage. However, CGST or IGST on supply of the following items has not yet been levied. It shall be levied with effect from such date as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. Petroleum crude, high-speed diesel, motor spirit, natural gas and aviation turbine fuel. Tax payable on supply of goods or services are both under reverse charge. CGST or IGST shall be paid by the recipient of goods or services or both on reverse charge basis in the following cases. Supply of such goods or services or both as notified by the government on the recommendations of the GST council. Supply of specified categories of goods or services are both by an unregistered or registered supplier. To specified class of registered persons as notified by the government on recommendations of GST council. All the provisions of CGST Act or IGST Act shall apply to the recipient in the aforesaid cases as if. He is the person liable for paying the tax in relation to the supply of such goods or services or both. Let us first understand the concept of reverse charge mechanism. Reverse charge mechanism, generally the supplier of goods or services is liable to pay GST. However, under the reverse charge mechanism, the liability to pay GST is cast on the recipient of the goods or services. Reverse charge means the liability to pay tax is on the recipient of supply of goods or services. Instead of the supplier of such goods or services in respect of notified categories of supply. It may be noted that the underlying principle is an indirect tax is that. It may be noted that the underlying principle of an indirect tax is that burden of tax has to be ultimately passed on to the recipient. GST being an indirect tax, this principle holds good for GST. Under normal circumstances, the statutory liability to deposit GST and undertake compliances is on the supplier. While he may recover the same from its recipient. However, under reverse charge mechanism. The statutory liability to deposit GST and undertaking compliance requirements shifts from the supplier to the recipient. There are two types of reverse charge scenarios provided in law. The first scenario occurs in case of supply of specified categories of goods or services. Covered by section nine subsection three of the CGST. Second scenario. Occurs in case of supply of specified categories of goods or services made by an unregistered supplier. To specified class of registered recipients covered by section nine subsection four of CGST. Similar provisions are given under section five subsection four. Goods and service noticed notified under reverse charge mechanism under. Section nine subsection three of CGST Act and section five subsection three of IGST are as follows. Supplies of goods taxable under reverse charge, that is supply of goods where tax is payable by the recipient. Goods like cashew nuts not shelled or peeled, BD wrapper leaves, tobacco leaves and raw cotton. Where when supplied by an agriculturist to any registered person. Supply of lottery when supplied by state government, unit territory or any local authority to lottery distributor or selling agent. Silk yarn when supplied. By manufacturer of silk yarn to any registered person, used vehicles seized or confiscated. Used vehicles seized and confiscated goods, old and used goods, waste and scrap when supplied by. Central government, state government, unit territory or any local authority to any registered person, priority sector lending certificate. When supplied by a registered person to any registered person are taxable under reverse charge. Okay, now let us talk about supply of services under reverse charge. First is GTA service. GTA. A goods transport agency, a person who runs this transport agency. He is the supplier and recipient is any factory registered under government. By the factories act, any society registered under societies registration act, cooperative society. And any person, registered person under CGST or IGST or SGST UTGST act. Any body corporate established by any other, any or any other law. Any partnership firm, whether registered or not, under any law. Including association of persons, any casual taxable person located in the territory. Okay, however, reverse charge mechanism shall not apply to services provided by GTA by way of. Transport of goods in a goods carriage by road to a department or establishment of the central government, state government or unit territory. Or local authority or governmental agencies which has taken registration under the. CGST Act only for the purpose of deducting tax under section fifty one. And not for making a taxable supply of goods or services. Further, nothing contained in this entry shall apply the where the supplier has taken registration under CGST. Act twenty seventeen and exercised the option to pay tax on the services of GTA in relation to transport of goods. Supplied by him under forward charge and the supplier has issued a tax invoice to the recipient. Charging CGST at the applicable rates and has made the prescribed declaration on such invoice issued by him. Okay, so we have completed this segment as well. Now let us go to the fourth segment which is revision of whatever we studied yesterday. Page number thirty nine to page number forty three. Charge of GST. Classification under GST. In order to determine the rate applicable on a particular supply of goods or services. One needs to first determine the classification of such goods or services. Classification of goods and services assumes significance since there are different rates prescribed for supply of. Different goods and services. Therefore, classification is crucial. For determining the rate of tax applicable on a particular product or service. Classification of goods. Classification of goods means identification of the chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item in which a particular product will be classified. Sections, chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item are referred to are referred to in the schedules of rate notification. For goods under GST or the chapter, heading, subheading and tariff item of the first schedule to the. Customs Tariff Act nineteen seventy five. Indian customs tariff is based on HSN. HSN stands for harmonized system. Of nomenclature. It is a multipurpose international product nomenclature developed by the World Customs Organization. For the purpose of classifying goods across the world in a systematic manner. It comprises of about five thousand commodity groups, each identified by a six digits code. Code can be extended, arranged in a legal and a logical structure and is supported by well-defined rules. To achieve uniform classification. India has extended the HSN codes up to eight digits. Along the lines of HSN, the Indian customs tariff has a set of rules of interpretation. Rules for interpretation of the first schedule and general explanatory notes. These rules and their general explanatory notes give clear direction as to how the nomenclature in the schedule is to be interpreted. These rules for interpretation including section and the chapter notes and the general explanatory notes of the first schedule. Apply to the interpretation of the rate notification for goods under GST also. Consequently, under GST, goods are classified on the basis of HSN. In accordance with the rules for the interpretation of the customs tariff. Once classification for a product has been determined on this basis. The applicable rate has to be determined as per the rate prescribed in the rate notification issued under. GST. Classification of services. A new scheme of classification of services has been devised under GST. It is a modified version of the United Nations Central Product Classification. Under this scheme, the services of various descriptions have been classified under various sections, headings and groups. Chapter ninety nine has been assigned for services. This chapter has following sections. Section five, construction services. Section six, distributive trade services, accommodation, food and beverage service, transport. Services, gas and electricity distribution services, financial and related services, real estate services. And rental and leasing services, business and production services, community, social and personal services and other. Miscellaneous services. Each section is divided into various headings which are further divided into groups. Its further division is made in the form of tariff item, service or codes. Chapter, section, heading, group, tariff item, service code. Rate of tax is determined in accordance with the service code in which the service is classified. GST rates prescribed for various goods broadly six rates of GST have been notified in six schedules. Of rate notification for goods with point zero one two point zero point one two five percent, one point five percent, two point five. Of rate notification for goods with point zero one two point zero point one two five percent, one point five percent, two point five, six, nine and fourteen. SGST, UTGST and the equivalent rate is also leviable. With regard to IGST broadly six rates have been notified in six schedules of rate notification for goods with. Point two five, three percent, five percent, twelve, eighteen and twenty eight. Certain specified goods have been exempted from tax. GST rates prescribed for various services broadly six rates of CGST have been notified for services with. Point seven five percent, two point five percent, three point seven five percent, six percent, nine and fourteen. Equivalent rate of SGST or UTGST will also be levied. For IGST, six rates have been notified for services with one point five percent, five percent, seven point five, twelve, eighteen and twenty eight percent. For specified services, nil rate of tax has been notified. Services of gambling, services by way of admission to casinos or race clubs or any place having casinos or race clubs. Sporting events like IPL, services provided by a race club by way of. Totalizer or a license to bookmaker in such club, gambling etcetera attract the highest rate of twenty eight percentage. A number of services are subject to a lower rate of five percentage CGST at two point five. SGST at two point five, IGST at five percentage. For instance, GTA services taxed at five percentage. Subject to the condition that credit of input tax charged on goods and services. Used in supplying said service has not been taken. Similarly, tax rate for supply of restaurant service other than at specified premises is five percentage without any input tax. Credit. Services not covered under any specific heading are taxed at the rate of eighteen percentage. Okay, in the following paras applicability of GST in real estate sector has been briefly discussed. Okay, this is where we had, we had huge confusion yesterday. Let us see if we get any clarity today if it. Gets any better. The effective rate of GST on real estate sector for the new projects by promoters are as follows. One percentage without ITC on construction of affordable houses, area sixty square meter in metros. Or ninety square meter in non-metros and value up to forty five lakhs. Five percentage. ITC is applicable on construction of all houses other than affordable houses and. Commercial apartments such as shops, offices etcetera in a residential real estate project. In which the carpet area of commercial apartments is not more than fifteen percentage of the total carpet area of. All apartments. So here. One percentage GST without ITC on construction of affordable houses. Five percentage GST without ITC on construction of all houses other than affordable houses and commercial. Apartments such as office, residential and everything. Conditions about tax rates shall be available subject to the following conditions. ITC shall not be available. Eighty percent of input and input services. Used in supplying the service shall be purchased from registered persons. Okay, eighty percent of input and input services other than services by way of grant of development rights. Long-term lease of land against upfront payment in the form of premium salami development charges. Or FSA including additional FSA, electricity, high-speed diesel, motor spirit and natural gas. So you don't get input tax for all these things. But eighty percent of inputs used in supplying. Eighty percent of input and input services used in supplying shall be purchased from registered persons. If you fulfill these two conditions. Then you get, you can charge own percent or five percentage GST. However. If the value of input or input services purchased from registered supplier is less than five percentage, sorry, less than eighty percentage. Promoter has to pay GST on reverse charge basis under section nine subsection four. At the rate of eighteen percentage. On all such inward supplies to the extent of short of eighty percentage of inward supplies from. Registered supplier. Okay. Further, where cement is received from an unregistered person, the promoter shall pay tax on supply of. Cement on reverse charge basis at the applicable rate which is twenty eight percentage. Moreover, GST on capital goods shall be paid by the promoter on reverse charge basis at the applicable rates. Okay. I can say it is much better than what I understood yesterday. At least now I am able to appreciate okay what is what. Why is it so, why you don't get input tax credit, why only eighty percentage or. Why you have to compensate the shortage of eighty percentage from registered person. All those things we will, we will appreciate in a, in a much better way in the future sessions. Maybe two, three more readings of it will do or maybe we will. When we read and learn more inputs from some other concept inside GST, this will connect. So, but it is far better than how it was yesterday. So on that note, we have completed all four revisions, older revisions that are supposed to complete, we have completed. Now let us go to the today's. Topic, whatever we are going to study for new, which is the last segment of this chapter, composition levy. So, section ten of the CGST Act. Not withstanding anything to the contrary contained in this act, but subject to the provisions of subsection three and four. Of section nine, a registered person whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year. Did not exceed fifty lakh rupees may opt to pay in lieu of the tax payable by him. Under. Opt to pay instead of tax payable by him under. Okay, may opt to pay instead of the tax payable by him under subsection one of section nine, an amount of tax. Calculated at such rate as may be prescribed but not exceeding one percentage of the turnover in state. Or turnover in union territory in case of a manufacturer. Two and a half percent of the turnover in state or union territory in case of persons engaged in making supplies. Referred to in clause B of paragraph six of schedule two and half percentage. Of turnover in state or turnover in union territory in case of other suppliers. Paragraph six B of schedule two. Okay, subject to such conditions and restrictions as may be prescribed. Provided that the government may by notification increase the set limit of fifty lakhs rupees. To such higher amount, not exceeding one crore and fifty lakh rupees as may be recommended by the council. Provided further that a person who opts to pay tax under clause A or clause B or clause C. May supply services other than referred to in clause B of para six of schedule two of value. Not exceeding ten percentage of turnover in state or union territory in the preceding financial year or. Five lakh rupees whichever is higher. Okay. Till here it was clear, this proviso is little confusing anyway, moving on. Explanation, for the purposes of the second proviso, the value of exempt supply of services. Provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances in so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. Shall not be taken into account for determining the value of turnover in a state or union territory. Second section, the registered person shall be eligible to opt under subsection one if. Save as provided in subsection one, he is not engaged in the supply of services. He is not engaged in making any supply of goods or services which are not levable to tax under this act. He is not engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. He is not engaged in making any supply of services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax and source. Under section fifty two. He is not a manufacturer of such goods as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. And he is neither a casual taxable person or a non-resident taxable person. Provided that where more than one registered persons are having the same. Permanent account number issued under the Income Tax Act nineteen sixty one. The registered person shall not be eligible to opt for the scheme under subsection one unless all such. Registered persons opt to pay tax under that subsection. Okay, subsection two is pretty clear. They are eliminating people, disqualifying certain people from taking this composition scheme. And they are also saying that if one has multiple registered registrations under the single pan. Then every person, every registration should uh choose composition levy. So it's not that I have two GST registration, under one registration I will pay tax through composition and the other registration I will pay normal thing. So that's not, uh it's not like given like that. So that's the proviso to section, uh subsection two. Now let's talk about subsection two A. Not withstanding anything to the contrary contained in this act. But subject to the provisions of subsection three and four of section nine. A registered person not eligible to opt to pay tax under subsection one and two. Whose aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year did not exceed fifty lakh rupees may opt to pay. In lieu of the tax payable by him under subsection one of section nine. An amount of tax calculated at such rate as may be prescribed but not exceeding three percent of the turnover in state. Or turnover in union territory if he is not engaged in making any supply of goods or services. Which are not levable to tax under this act. Engaged in making any interstate outward supplies of goods or services. Engaged in making any supply of services through an e-commerce operator who is required to collect tax at source at under section fifty two. A manufacturer of such goods or supplier of such services as may be notified by the government on the recommendations of the council. And a casual taxable person or a non-resident taxable person. Provided that where more than one registered person are having the same pan issued under the income tax act. The registered person shall not be eligible to opt for. The scheme under this subsection unless all such registered persons opt to pay tax under this subsection. Next, option avail of by a registered person under subsection one or subsection two A. As the case may be, shall lapse with effect from the day on which his aggregate turnover during a financial year. Exceeds the limit specified under subsection one or subsection two A as the case may be. A taxable person to whom the provisions of subsection one or as the case may be, subsection two A. Shall not collect any tax from the recipient on supplies made by him. Nor shall he be entitled to any credit of input tax. If the proper officer has reasons to believe that a taxable person has paid tax under subsection one of. Or subsection two A as the case may be despite not being eligible. Such person shall in addition to any tax that may be payable by him under any other provisions of this act. Be liable to a penalty and the provisions of section seventy three or section seventy four shall mutatis, mutandis. Apply for determination of tax and penalty. Explanation, for the purposes of computing aggregate turnover of a person or determining. Of a person for determining his eligibility to pay tax under this section, the expression. Aggregate turnover shall include the value of supplies made by such person from the first day of the April of a financial year. Up to the date when he becomes liable for registration under this act, but shall not include the value of exam supply. Of services provided by way of extending deposits, loans and advances in so far as the consideration. Is represented by way of interest or discount. Explanation two, for the purposes of determining the tax payable by a person under this section. The expression turnover in state or turnover in union territory shall not include the value of following supplies namely. Supplies from the first day of April of a financial year up to the date when such person becomes liable for registration under this act. And exam supply of services provided by way of extending deposits, loans or advances. In so far as the consideration is represented by way of interest or discount. Okay, a huge section. Section ten. Subsection one, subsection two, subsection two A. Subsection three, four, five. I was able to understand a few things. They were pretty clear and something, sometimes they were repeated. So we see many percentages like one percent, two and a half percent, half percent and then here we saw some three percent. So lots of rates are given here. Some exclusions are there like e-commerce operator, interstate supplier. Things like that. Non-resident taxable person. Things like that. Anyway, let us read one more page and we can close this. Maybe we will read till. Yeah, we will just read the overview and we'll wrap up for the day. A composition levy is an alternative method of levy of tax designed for small taxpayers whose turnover is up to a prescribed limit. The objective of composition scheme is to bring simplicity and to reduce the complaints cost of the small taxpayers. Okay. Initially, the scheme was designed to benefit the small traders, manufacturers and restaurant service providers. So the scheme was fundamentally for the supplier of goods and only for restaurant service providers. Not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption. However, subsequently, suppliers availing composition scheme. Were permitted to supply other services also though only up to a small specified value. This scheme is contained in subsections one and two of section ten of the CGST Act. Herein after referred to as composition scheme under section ten subsection one. Under this scheme, suppliers of goods have the option to pay tax at the concessional rate of one percentage of the turnover. And the restaurant service providers not supplying alcoholic liquor for human consumption have the option to pay tax at five percentage of. The turnover. Small taxpayers with an aggregate turnover in the preceding financial year up to one point five crores. Are eligible to pay tax at these rates in the current financial year up to an aggregate turnover of one point five crore. However, a person engaged exclusively in the supply of services other than. Restaurant service is not eligible for this composition scheme stipulated under. Subsection one and two. So composition scheme is primarily for people who supply goods and then people who supply. Restaurant service other than those who supply alcoholic liquor for human consumption. In order to provide the benefit of composition scheme to person engaged in supply of services other than restaurant service whose aggregate turnover in the preceding year. Financial year is up to fifty lakh. A scheme to pay tax at six percentage of the turnover was introduced subsequently. So originally. They were not eligible. Then a new scheme has come which means they can pay tax at flat six percentage. A mixer supplier who is primarily engaged in supplying services other than restaurant service along with marginal supply of goods. Could also avail the benefit of this scheme. The provisions of this scheme are contained in subsection two A of section ten. Essentially, the composition scheme under subsection two A herein after referred to in as composition scheme under subsection. Ten subsection two A is for small service providers like salons, stylists, tailors etcetera. This scheme provides an option to such suppliers to pay tax at six percentage of the turnover in the current financial year. Up to an aggregate turnover of fifty lakhs. Suppliers opting for composition levy need not worry about the classification of their goods or services or both. The rates of GST applicable. On their goods or services etcetera. They are not required to raise any tax invoice but simply need to issue a bill of supply. Wherein no tax will be charged from the recipient. Okay. Hmm, an eligible person opting to pay tax under the composition scheme shall instead of paying tax on every invoice at. The specified rate, pay tax at the prescribed percentage of turnover every quarter through prescribed form. GST CMP zero eight. At the end of a quarter, he would pay the tax without availing the benefit of input tax credit that is expected. Return is to be filed annually by a composition supplier. Registration under GST law is compulsory for opting for the composition scheme. The provisions relating to composition scheme, composition levy are contained in section ten of the CGST Act and chapter two of CGST rules. The said rules have been incorporated in the discussion in the following paras at relevant places. Okay, now, composition scheme of section ten, section ten subsection one and two and then ten subsection two A. Okay, right, we can stop here. From here, we will continue tomorrow. So on that note, we have come to the conclusion of today's study session. We read from page number three point four four to three point four nine. Four nine, isn't it? Yeah, we studied till three point four nine. Today's date, twenty seventh of October two thousand twenty five. So on that note, let us wrap up today's study session. I will see you tomorrow which will be study session number twenty five. Thank you and bye bye.